This is their property, this is the master's. Oh yeah. Yeah. I would really appreciate it. If you have anything to say, please go outside and say it. I'm putting the proceedings on as quickly as possible. We've got a lot of work today. As you can see, our distinguished chairman is not in today. He couldn't be here, so therefore that I'm responsible and my distinguished colleague will be my vice chair. This meeting had been called to order according to the sunshine rule. Can I have a roll call please?
Mr. Gilly.
Here.
Mr. Halverson.
Here.
Mr. Langley.
Here.
Mr. Divya.
Here.
Mr. Ingber.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Okay, because we lack one member on the city. Marsh Beever is one of our members because we have seven members on the board. I intend to take no, I don't think there's many applications that we can't do unless we can't do it. But unless you have a real good reason, I'm not tabling anything. We have seven members this evening. We have a lot of applications and we're going to get them done. Okay, can everybody please hand up some of the flag? Can I get a full report, please? Motion by Mayor Gully. Second by Juneau. Roll call please.
Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Divya.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Attorney, you can explain that for sure. It's not on the agenda, however, we received a request on those seven four application. It's a same time of 2008, it's 3524A, Big Shop LLC, Sprint Street, Block 78, 21 through 3. The applicant is... The line is here, I'm speaking into it.
Okay.
Okay. Continuing on, the applicant is requesting a shift in the building location approximately ten feet. It's my understanding that this request...
Excuse me.
That this request will now require any new or exacerbate any existing variances. I believe Ryan Flannery is here on behalf of that WH and can give a court firm testimony. We're simply seeking approval to deal with this change in the street.
Right. The orders granted inside got set back as a result of our current department's part of the law. There could be less than, in fact, there could be less than...
The distance is going to be less. The buffer that was required before was larger because it was a residence. Now it's a shule, and so it's two parking lot of the shule. So if the buffer requirement went down from 50 to 25, because the building had been kept at the same level and in awkward position in order to maintain 40 feet where 50 was required. So the board had granted relief. Now relief is not needed, and additionally, we can slide the building over, so that it's a win.
So in this case, Attorney, can you handle that administrative...
Yes, that's involved with the town here. But if it's already all spent and not involved, we'll work out and ensure...
So we don't have to vote on it? Okay, so I, any member have any questions?
Do you want us to know about it on the record?
Same building size and everything?
Yes.
Yes.
It's less of a deviation.
Right.
No, no impact to parking.
Right, do they have to notice the neighbor?
About, about... They have a letter from the neighbors saying we're in favor of this. The shule makes next.
Attorney, I've got a...
Yes, sir.
And that's in your package, I don't know.
Yeah, that's from Ralph...
Okay, great, so Attorney, you can handle that administrative department, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving right along. Yes, I saw that letter. How did you do with Congress, congregation, what, what... What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, because you have other applications, I'm going to wish the applications come in and I will handle them.
That's right.
Okay, great. Okay, moving right along. Appeal number 4093, do we have any questions? I said I wasn't going to table anything, does anybody have a very good read of the papers?
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
3773A to the holding, City, a board member who was here last month. We definitely got reached while the applicant was outside waiting and spoke with the neighbors. And now guys are asking representing the objectors. It came very close to an understanding for a revised plan and work. We thought we would have a time at this meeting, obviously didn't, waiting on revised plans. So we never could renotice, Mr. Gass, Mr. Gass Raskin presented the...
Okay.
We were kind of, there's no meeting date yet, we haven't submitted the plans, and we will renotice.
So you'll be submitting plans, so that we can table them. And I have a motion on table being appealed number 3773A. Motion, please. Motion by Mayor Gully. Second by Juneau. March Night Creek.
And there'll be a new plans and new notice.
Yes, 100%.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And then application 4102, Birdside. I did receive an email for this week from Jerry Franny indicating that some neighbors had indicated that Attorney was objecting. Both my party and those neighbors met only even earlier this afternoon. They got very close, they think in agreement, there could be some revisions of those plans. This is the first time we've been heard, and it's almost, it's a second-class application on the agenda. So we ask that if he carries them, if any revisions necessary. And if you can, I would ask...
So in other words, are they going to be talking to him, that's what you want to hear?
No, they, I think they almost, they talked, they almost very clearly...
Are there any, are there going to be any changes?
I don't know if there are any rechanges I can make to revise the notice. I would ask that this be carried to the next meeting. We don't further notice this, so obviously if there are any changes, I will just notice anyway. But this part of my desk, I don't have any change.
Any question, any board members? See now, can I have a motion to table appeal number 4102?
Next week is April 8.
Next week is April 8. I'll have his turn, motion, any other second? Second by Mayor Gully. Roll call please.
Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Divya.
Yes.
Or Mr. Ingber.
Yeah.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes. Anybody here for appeal number 3773A that's going to be tabled and will be heard at the next meeting, which will be on April 8?
No, no, no.
No, 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 wrong one.
4102.
No, I'm truly, I'm...
Chair, 3773A, do be, is going to be off until they submit new plans and new notice.
Okay.
4102 was just adjourned without a new notice to April 8.
So my correction, 3773A is going to be off until they put in new plans. And the one that will be tabled for next month will be appeal number 4102, Birdside. That will be heard next month. So if anybody's here for those applications, I'll see you next month for that application. And that meeting will be April 8. Moving along, appeal number 4093, that's your topper?
You might recall, Chairman, that I, this, the chair is closed, although the board wanted some revised architecturalists to see where the basement steps were going, right, Collins?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
As far as I know, you did get revised plans.
For the record, wanted to identify the plan and put a date on it, perhaps?
It's supposed to be... Excuse me, it said the motion approved, that we approved, but can new plans be submitted on March 8 that show one basement entrance and a full basement plan? Should have the plans then.
Question, Chairman, if Mr. Lines can put on the record that the architectural plans meet those requirements?
Yes.
Would you put it right and answer it if we did, sorry, did you correct this? Is where were firms that hold pretty...
I do.
Let lines, I put you here as a professional here, professional planist. The plan we have is prepared by Alan Johnson, Architect, dated January 3, 2019. It shows the basement on the left side of the plan, there's two basements, one on either side of the duplex. It shows the stairs along the front of the house. On each unit, there's no entrance on the side. There's one entrance to each basement apartment. Basically, a two-bedroom apartment unit each, each unit.
Do they have any questions regarding the stairs and the location of it? Attorney, are you okay with it?
I'm sorry, Chair.
Are you okay with it? What's the...
What's the, this is based upon last testimony. Yes, we have recommendations in the letter, which I assume other than testimony, that lets them indicate that they can meet and approve, is that correct?
Yes, we discussed all that on the last, we were just to... It's the basement floor.
And now what you're looking for now is an actual proposal, this will take...
That is correct.
This application was heard last month?
Chair, you approved the application subject to, it should approve, subject to a firm agreement with the plan. So my recommendation would be just to have a vote to approve the plans, because we already approved the application.
Yeah, approved. Do we have to vote into the public?
No, no.
Was the plans have been approved?
I would recommend that you vote to approve the plans, they just, it's easier just to tell me the basement floor.
Yes, Jerry, I wasn't, I wasn't here last month, and I don't, I didn't listen to this all.
You didn't, did not?
On this particular, no.
Please, no.
And how?
All right, so then five were here.
I actually listened, but I wasn't there, actually.
I guess I'm looking to approve the plans. Motion by Mayor Gully.
Yes.
Second by...
Juneau.
Juneau. Can I have a vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Divya.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes. Thank you. 3998. Appeal number 3998, David Holtz. This is a James, for those that were here, this was an application I was heard last month regarding a duplex that we built on James Street. One of our members that was not here did hear the minutes of the meeting. And Mr. Halverson also, so it's allowed us to vote, because we didn't have enough members at that time to vote for this particular application. So basically, we're looking at just voting on this application. Appeal number 3998.
Sure, question, Chair.
Yes.
Not last month, this application would not work. Please come back and show us.
No, no, this application, last month, the meeting, the public was closed. When I put in the planner, it requested at the end, then wait for seven people.
Right, but I have a member, the application being that we didn't have set up the architectural, did we have set up?
We were discussing the...
Right, I heard some of the discussions, if I comment on what way she's saying. I've heard on things about some of the members' concerns about the corner unit.
Well, I understand it was concerned, but I recall voting, hello.
No, there was no, there's no voting, just watched you.
Right.
My question was that we vote on the coming back of the subplans, and listen to the public.
And we make a recommendation.
Well, you can vote yes or no.
Okay.
And we don't... At one point, there was this discussion about buying a cake, and I think more down. And I think the way it was left at the end is, it was, whatever was in front of us, we should be voting, and all discussion, and everything was done. But what we have to do tonight is just vote yes or no.
The judge, people, can we make a motion? Just go up and have a...
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I think that, I think I've listened to all the, to all the thing that was going back and forth. I think that in this, in this particular property, it only fits two places. It doesn't fit any single-family homes, it's at the end of the block. It seems like to put a single-family house there, it doesn't make much sense. Take everything into account, give every application cause and effect merit. And at this point, I will make a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve. Appeal 3998.
I'd like to second Mr. Apollon's motion. I'd like to make a comment on that, see if Mr. Apollon would like to add to the motion. If all units to be like unified, I think the end unit was 9700 square feet, the other ones were about 10. If they can get some more space on the corner unit, or maybe make a 98 or 99 all across to unify them and get that corner unit out of the side triangle, I would be happy with that. And the second thing I would like to put on the record is that behind the shule, was a lot of discussion about the area behind the shule. I didn't get a chance to comment, or some other members made comments. I would look at it as almost a self-composed hardship. If they would come back, try for duplexes, behind these duplexes or behind the shule, I would consider it almost, almost self-composed hardship. And that wouldn't allow any, but, single-family houses there.
Let's go about this.
Go on, is there a large cough there?
I'm saying, the, listen, gentlemen, I would look at it in the future as if we created its own self-composed hardship. If you would come, if an application would come with a duplex, the same thing that sold it to the shule, would come with an application for duplex there, I would consider it, in my opinion, as a self-composed hardship.
Okay.
I'll explain to you later.
I have to say, unfortunately, we have to look at the application from this point. We can't, we can't accept that as part of the motion, because we have to give the application a chance to come before us.
I understand.
At that point, then we can discuss.
I'm just letting whoever comes in the future know, not right now.
That's fine.
As I... That's not...
Additional section, we want the large block on the corner, to make it a little smaller, and the other a little bigger, is that what we're saying?
No, the large one on the corner would be not the size of the house, it's the area.
No, I meant the lot.
The lot, a little bit bigger.
Lot is almost 6,000 square feet, the other one is 5,000.
Oh, we're having, so we might have some chance.
Through the trouble, so that the corner house is coming...
Your condition is that the lot you want makes it smaller, the way it is now.
Oh, you know, that one that says, we should make the house, I must have seen the wrong place. Because the house itself is not in the side triangle. So, this is right, right.
All right, so we have a motion, and very good executive, to approve, appeal number 3998, can I get a vote, please?
Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Divya.
No.
Mr. Ingber.
Would the applicant consider shrinking?
No, what? No, take it down.
If it's a yes, then yes.
Mr. Ingber.
I told you what you said.
Yes. If the applicant would shrink a little bit.
I know, I know, I know, okay.
I know, I know, I know, okay.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
That's it.
Good luck. Okay, moving right along, we're going to appeal number 4103, Cedar Bridge Holdings LLC.
Cedar Bridge Holdings LLC, we said though, the whole variance, site identification sign area. Terry Bowden, January 22nd, 2019. Proposed sign, we require the variance, sign area 230 square feet proposed, as the proposed 20 square feet.
I just want to remind anyone that's speaking out there, please, if you have something to say, move outside because our microphones are very sensitive. Thank you. Mary Weinstein, welcome.
Good evening, welcome. Welcome, welcome to your office, Chairman. Doing a great job. Mary Weinstein here on behalf of the applicant, Cedar Bridge Holdings LLC. This application is relatively simple, I think. It's for a height variance to install an approximately 29-foot high... Alright, you didn't have to say anything. 15.17 foot wide, pylon sign in front of this already existing office building. If any of you have ever driven by, you know that this is a beautiful Class A office building. And the purpose of this sign is simply to be large enough so that they can fit all of the tenants' names on it. With that, we keep this simple, I'm going to ask that Brian's bladder be sworn, so that he can address the positive and negative criteria.
So would you raise your right hand if you were aware or affirm the cell, hold your cell to go.
I do, my planner Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have two, this is A1, is a rendering of the sign as proposed. A2 is a copy of the plan, showing where the sign is. I'm assuming everybody knows where the planner's avenue is.
What's the name of that? The wall of your winding road.
The sign is in front of the office building that's there, just before the quick check. As Mary indicated, it's a very nice prominent building, they want to have space so that the tenants have visibility from the road, it matters to the public, it matters to tenants. It's good for everybody, it's a very great wall. Put on the record because we're asking for a use because we're exceeding the height. The size of the leaves and all that, it provides visibility and it complies with the law of the public to know where the building is. The municipal land use law, NDA SA 40,552, under the purpose of the Act, to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use and development of all lands in the state, in matter which promotes the public health, taking all the general welfare. We've discussed that particularly suing, if it has a special reason, there's no benefit to it, there's only benefit. That's my testimony. Going through Terry's report, the variances that we need are 29 feet, where 22 is the maximum required, so we're proceeding by seven, and the... Right, and the sign area, 120 square feet, is allowed and reduced to 440, so that we can provide the availability for that. There is recorded as a review comment of the colors and materials, and the rendering shows that. It's also near a paint, paint and maintenance placement, but it's outside the easement and has no impact on that, so there's no reason to need it, and will be internally removed.
Mr. Flodry, what does the ordinance allow now in terms of where?
The maximum square footage that's allowed by the ordinance is 120, and we're asking for 440. And the maximum height that's permitted by the ordinance is 22, and we're asking for 29.
Question Chairman, I just want to make sure I understand, you're saying that the sign is outside of the basement?
That is correct.
Alright, the way it's depicted is a little confused.
It looks like it just touches it, but I checked with the survey department, and it's intended and will be constructed where it's just outside.
Alright, who maintains the basement?
Quick check, me, thank you.
Alright, alright, so it's going to be, they must have their own maintenance?
Yes.
Alright, so if necessary, they're going to maintain?
Well, this is outside of the basement, so they don't need to maintain.
Alright. It's their responsibility?
Yes.
If there's a requirement to do, to make an update, they will?
That is correct.
It's province, it doesn't pertain to them.
That is correct.
Alright, thank you.
So who's responsible for the sign?
Design will be responsible for the building.
Not quick check?
No.
Not quick?
Not quick check, it's going to be the owner of the office building, Cedar Bridge Holdings LLC.
Any other questions?
Is there a traffic study now as far as like, during traffic, there's in and out of this corner block, slight traffic?
Well, it's not within any side triangle leasings. Side triangle leasings were established when the plan was originally developed, and this is not in any of the side triangle leasings there.
So there's actually a line on an angle of the plan going across the basement, is that?
That's a side triangle.
Yes, yes, and we're on the other side.
Eric, it's so... Are you comfortable with the sign on there, no traffic? This won't was blocking? Cars coming in and out?
They have established, just a triangle leasement, is this based upon township, county or area?
That was a county requirement, the ASCHO had actually left, the ASCHO requirement source, 50 feet back from the stop bar, and was certainly is less than the county requirement.
So, so what I'm hearing is that the side triangle, the side triangle leasement shown is a county leasement which is more restrictive than ASCHO, which is the national standard.
That is correct.
Based upon that, and based on the fact that you appear to be located more than, you know, outside of that side triangle leasement, it's your testimony on behalf of the applicant that you don't see any side distance or any traffic issues?
Absolutely.
Is this a change from what was originally planned?
Well, there was no sign original. The office building got approved, the owner of the office building is here now, trying to put up a sign for the benefit of his tenants and the benefits of the law of republic. And it's a beautiful sign, that is a benefit everyone's.
Just to reiterate what he asked, the original plans, the original approvals, there was no sign involved at all?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Any none, I'm looking open to the public, anybody want to be heard on appeal number 4103, please step forward.
So would you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the whole truth is all we got?
Do, I affirm motion ZINES 112, Allen Hurst, Boulevard, Lakewood, New Jersey, 08701. I just want to know if the sign is having the original lit up sign, or just like a sign?
It's going to have internal lighting, so that at night, people can read the names of the tenant, as well as see the letter. But no, no video, nothing changed.
That's a good catch, we'll send it actually, you've commented for.
Okay, I know, just, sometimes, I don't know if it works up here, sometimes you need like, a lit sign permit, does Lakewood have that? It does? Who does that go through? Do, is there like, building inspection or something?
Someone's building an electric. Someone's building an electric.
Okay, so like, just like, the lights, like, like, like a brightness or that kind of thing? Well, our engineers are great guys, okay, thank you, I wish them luck.
Our ordinances do require, just so you know, our ordinances require a limit of off-site lighting, so to speak, and this will be fine.
And this is a veteran of itself.
No, but they, but...
The only relief we're requesting is the sign area and the height. No other...
But, but the lighting off-site will still require, will still comply with the ordinance, or else they wouldn't...
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else, see none, closing to the public? Do anybody else have any other comments? See none, can I get a vote on 4103 please?
One last, one last, just one, we can confirm that all the electronics, digital are...
Well, there's going to be, like, I don't think it's, I mean, a floodlight and ground is going to show it up on the sign.
It's currently, it's currently...
Hang that after, it's not like a billboard or anything.
No, it's not, it's like, it's not like a billboard. It doesn't have images that change in different advertisements, no.
Just reconfirming.
Just tenants' names.
Mel Schmeyer, go. Second by Moshe Berg, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly.
I said yeah.
The house is...
Yes.
The lane.
Yes.
Senator Alala.
Yes.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we go to appeal 4101, Temple West House Hall.
Terry Bowden, January 22nd, 2019. The applicant seeks minor subdivision approval to subdivide the existing...
Wait a second, Brandon, listen, I'm not going to say it again, next time I'm going to ask people to leave, okay, because again, you're affecting the hearing that's going on this side, okay? Our microphones are very sensitive now, so anything that goes on back there, it puts us to our side, and when people want to see it, they can't hear what's going on. So please, thank you.
The applicant seeks minor subdivision approval to subdivide the existing 16,928 acre tract known as lots 47.01, 47.02, and block 1160.04, into two lots designated as proposed lots 47.03, 47.04 on the subdivision plan. Three and a half acres are proposed to be conveyed from existing lot 47.02 to existing lot 47.01. Rule lot 47.03 is vacant. Rule lot 47.04 will contain the existing synagogue and cemetery.
Good evening, Michael Newark, Nova Jersey, Dakotas, on behalf of the applicant. Before I make a question, why are we here before you and on the planning board? The reason is, it is technically, we're amending, although I say technically, I already disagreed with Mr. Jackson about this, but it's, we're amending a use variance. We originally saw a use variance for the cemetery use, but what we're taking in this application is we're simply dividing off a portion of the property which is not used by that person alone, and selling it to someone else. We're not touching that other piece, wherever the eventual purchaser is, will probably come back before the planning or zoning board with whatever application they want. We're simply cutting off that piece, and for the likelihood better, we're getting rid of it. The applicant's engineer is Carolyn Fagan, on that first morning.
Would you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the whole truth is all we got?
I do.
Would you give your full name and display of it?
Sure, Carolyn Fagan, E X M Frank, E I G I N, from D W Smith.
Was it L Y N E or O Y N?
L Y N.
Listen, have you been before this podium before?
No, I haven't.
Okay, can you please introduce yourself to us?
Sure, Carolyn Fagan, from D W Smith, I have a bachelor's in civil engineering from NJIT, graduated in 1995. Got my P license in New Jersey in 2000, and got my plan license last year.
I can ask you something, Chairman? There was brief testimony as to the request for the unit use variance. That's only necessary because you subdivide property, all the remaining property, by definition, by definition, it's testifies to use. Two other things in our letter, there are four, and those, you know, the bulk variances, however, you have a design waiver that's required from sidewalk along Popco Way, as long, as well as curb sidewalk along Route 70.
And, just saying, you give the board a brief overview, and when I say brief, like only two minutes, that's what the application needs.
As, sorry. Basically, we just want to take three and a half acres from the cemetery and synagogue lot and transfer it to a new lot, 47.03, to make that lot be 6.5 acres. It's the wooded portion in the northeast section of the, of the property, and currently undeveloped, will just be for sale.
Who right now is the owner of that lot? The cemetery the owner of that lot?
The synagogue owns it.
The synagogue.
They own the whole parcel right now, looking at the property sale.
Well, they want us to divide.
That's it, yeah, there's no development planned at this time. The cemetery, the synagogue, the entire operation will remain on lot 47.04, there's no changes to that at all. We do want to request the design waiver for the sidewalk on Popco Way and the sidewalk in curb on Route 70.
Even less than two minutes, I ask for, but I have no further questions on our...
So the Chair, what zone is this going to become? It's going to remain industrial zone?
Yeah, the zone's unchanged.
And I remember a few years ago, sitting on the board here, we approved the extension of this place. So was that, is this acreage needed to have that approval, or we would have got that approval without this?
That approval, I believe you're talking about was back in 2008 for the construction of the synagogue?
Correct.
Okay, that happened, and they've been operating like that for a decade, I guess. We don't need this to do anything for any further development on the lot that's going to continue to house the cemetery and the synagogue. That one is compliant, even if we take the three and a half acres off.
That's my question.
Each lot will be compliant.
Each lot will be compliant?
Yes.
Didn't need this to create that?
No, 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 each lot actually far exceeds the law requirements for the lot, for the zone.
If you're wanting to recall, at one point, there was discussion of the synagogue building at JCC, on that adjacent property, that plan is out of session.
They are there, aren't they, they're in the trailer?
That's the federation, and that's on the trailer next to the synagogue.
And there's no possibility they'll build a building at some point?
Then I can own it, then I can own the property or something, I could be able to... And if they did, they'd have to come before some board, be it this guy or this man.
Okay, but, go back to us, and as for variance on the property, if it went into another building, building, another building, it's my question.
Well, they're not going to own it anymore.
It's no technical reason. Not as far as I am, let's hope so there. Any other questions from board members? Please.
The current owners of this plan, is it involved right now?
Correct.
Is it on the title, or is it considered an offer of assets?
I don't know, now that it's a synagogue, I find it hard to believe it's not.
And if they're going to, even transfer to a for-profit?
We don't have a buyer yet, so I can't give you the question. But if it is transferred to a for-profit...
They're still going to be owning it. This is it?
We still want it...
No, they're still going to be owning it, nothing's going to change. They're just making a second thought.
If, that's the answer to the question, if we sold the corporation, I would say in that.
Might be somebody in the back room.
They're still going to be making a second thought. They're still going to be making a second one's own, 4103.
That's for whatever potential buyer wants to remember.
Any other questions? Okay, I have to open to the public, does anybody have any questions on appeal number 4101, please step forward.
Chair, would you raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm, motion ZINES, Z I N E S, 112, Allen Hurst, Boulevard, Lakewood, New Jersey, 08701. First of all, you've done a great job, and welcome to Lakewood. Also want to welcome you to Lakewood Industrial Zone. This area recently, there's a lot of talk at the Township Committee and the other boards about side sidewalks in this, the zone. The schools don't want to put them in on the block. I'm sure, you guys may know from all the blocks, there are a couple of caper permits, a little further that way, north, east, thank you, on South, South, South Endy. Could you just point out where the new block? Could you just point out where, where the new block, where it's gonna be, that be, be there? Okay, so that, that new lot does not have any, will not have any frontage through Southend, right? Cause Route Southend, right? So even if someone buys that and they build it, and they build a, a bunch of houses and that, it would only be packed away and all that. So, but basically, I'm trying to say here that Route Southend, if we could get a sidewalk, at least on that side, it leaves the pack away or whatever. I'm just talking, I have the chance to talk. Do you wanna switch jobs?
Who's the junior?
I'm trying to, Mr. Erby, I'm doing the same. Anyway, I'm just trying to say, if there's any way we could ask the applicant for at least the Route Southend part. Oh, the Township Committee told the boards, I don't know if it was you, but some, some of the guys were told that they, they would like being that no one's putting concrete sidewalks in industrial park. At least if they could put an asphalt, um, that would be a big help, and the town hopes to expand that sidewalk. Just ask, the boards could ask them, at least an asphalt walkway that you could meander, which is a big word that means. What? Right, right, it doesn't have to be a stray concrete thing, you don't have to put any light, light bulbs or get them to there and buy all that kinda stuff. And just at least for Route Southend part, there's gonna be, like I said, there are caper permits coming. Stuff's is going on, and if this applicant doesn't put it in, then who will? As you heard, it's a nonprofit place, so if the township puts it in, then at some point in twenty years, it's gonna be on our taxes, not them, because they're the tax exempt. So, can pack away, we can leave, I guess, I don't know, we could leave it to the next owner. But at least for Route Southend part, I don't know how long it is, I'm not sure how long the frontage is, but there's some, something we can do about that, that's my question, and I wish them luck also.
Thank you.
And the rest of the board also.
Anybody else from the public wanna be heard? Any none, I close to the public. Just to answer the gentleman's question real quick, the township is aware that sidewalks are being put in. We have an engineering department, inspection department. Because it's just not a building, it's just a building of a lot, nothing taking place, or there's nothing here that we're gonna do that's gonna tell, put a sidewalk, put a two-walk.
Those are three questions.
But in the future, I'm sure, that if they come before us, if anything's gonna be built, then it'll be addressed at that time. Thank you, sir. Uh, any other question from board members? Okay, we have a motion on forty-one oh one, please. Okay, motion by Mary Gully?
Second.
Second by? Lancrey?
Mr. Gully?
Yes.
Mr. Hamersen?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Nattali?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you very much, you're welcome. Okay, Ms. Weinstein, you will lobby, okay, because I know your application. I'm gonna take your application, but I come back with your conference. I wanna take one application before you, if I may, but it's gonna be quick, and then we'll give you a lot of room, okay? At this time, I'd like to hear appeal number forty-one oh one. Forty, no, forty-one ten, I'm sorry. Forty-one ten? Abah Nattali?
Forty-one ten, Abah Nattali, the ritual pole, and add you lot twelve twelve, lot five, or twelve, so. Both variance requested the side yard setback by ten feet, opposed nine feet. I combined side yard setback by twenty-five feet, opposed eighteen point eighty-nine feet. Terry Bog, engineer plan, February twenty-third, twenty nineteen. The applicant seeking both variance with the side yard and aggregate side yard setback requirements to construct a new development.
Chairman, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the whole truth? I think that's probably last name. Thank you. Mr. Weinstein, you got a testimony?
Okay, the, the petition, the petition is, obviously, I made the, the, going one foot, one foot off from the ten feet and the, and the side setback, the house is completely, look, it's perfectly looking at the, it's actually fronted. I have to move back towards the fourth of the house, the lot actually becomes narrower, so I go into the setback. The property is, the property of the house is fourteen, and it was one foot on one side off the ten, ten feet, the other is about one point zero inches. And that's close to the setback. It was a single family home, thirty, eighty, hundred square feet, this floor, thirty, 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 thirty square feet.
Weinstein, can you provide extra testimony in terms of the debate, the, the whole variance, the questions?
Yes.
Actually, we, we required the two side yard setback variance. There's an existing lot area variance where we have eleven thousand eighty point two one square feet, twelve thousand required this in existing condition. And we have the existing lot width variance, ninety's required, and we have seventy-nine point five five. Are the houses on hold size? Uh, yes, there are. It's a fully developed neighborhood, so you could, you could expand a little bit of that lot. No, we couldn't. And, and that's actually this special reason for variance, that if we actually had a conforming lot for the zone, we would, we wouldn't be here as a side yard setback requirement. If you leave the zone, we are also, there's an existing twenty-foot side yard setback, the house is there, thirty's required, we're requesting a stay at twenty. Reason we're requesting that is the existing house has a septic system in the rear. It was recently reconstructed, it's, so basically, brand new, but where it's located, we can't move the house back any further or else we'd have to relocate. Being this is a developed neighborhood, everybody else around us also has septic system. We don't have anything else to move, we have to keep it where it is, because it probably doesn't meet the current requirements based on the neighbors, because since that's where it is, we were allowed to rebuild it and leave everything the way it is. So, had it been, had we not had the lot, existing narrow lot, this house would, we wouldn't be here, we would've got building permits. So, it's really a hardship, is that it's a narrow lot with no way to move the house back any further because of existing conditions in the neighborhood. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
We wrote in this letter of request information about the shed.
The shed will be relocated to a conforming location for me.
The shed will not be, keep it in place, with the right setback.
Actually, I believe the accessory setback requirement is ten feet to height, correct? Raise that one.
It's five feet of shed, five feet.
Is it five feet? I stand corrected, if that's the case, it is. Thank you, Brandon.
Eleven, any questions from board members who've got this application? Good, please.
Um, I noticed that you have, is there only one basement access?
No, there's two, it's a basement.
And where are they? I was looking, I only noticed one. You have two outside exterior basement access?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, I just, I'm not, is it, see, one's on the left side of the house, and the other?
They're both right next to each other, one goes straight in the playroom and in the bedroom, and one in the back is a little bit more far.
So, so it's not, it's not two, it's one side of stairs with two doors?
It's one side of stairs.
With two doors? Uh, are there any steps that go from the outside to an attic? Uh, I noticed also, I see, you have number four is the, is the fourth parking place, are you using the garage as a fourth parking place? I don't see four upstream parking, I see only three on the picture.
Three in the driveway, one in the road.
Okay, so then the garage is gonna be, remain a garage, it will not be finished?
For the time being, yes.
Okay, so for the time being, that is at some time in the future, if you should, you will not be in compliance, so.
I'm gonna use it right now, but it's, it'll be a problem, it will be a problem.
I'm not sure that, that the garage is counted as one of the upstream.
Just, I just wanna clarify, according to the plans you have here, Mr. Nattali, you have shown one parking space is your garage.
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanna confirm that to Mr. Nattali. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm open here to the public, does anybody in the public wanna hear? Appeal number forty-one ten, please step forward. Hearing none, uh, closer to the public, anybody else have any question?
Good, go ahead.
I understand, because you mentioned that, um, there's a basement step that goes into a bedroom, so I'm assuming that that bedroom is being reserved for your personal use?
Yeah.
So, how many bedrooms does the house have?
Five.
And one in the basement?
One.
And that, that in compliance, um?
Terry?
I'm sorry, Chair.
This is your point. Any other question from board members? Hearing none, can I get a vote, please, on this application? Motion to approve by Mosheberg?
I'll second.
Second by Mary Gully, roll call please.
Mr. Gully?
Yes.
Mr. Hamersen?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Nattali? Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Inger? Mr. Inger?
Yes.
And that's all, that's all.
Yes.
That's it.
Good luck. Now, Ms. Weinstein, please. Raise this with your presence.
Happy to make way for Mr. Nattali.
Mr. Question, question up, wait up.
The first one we have, Chairman, is, uh, the first one we have is for correspondence. And that's, uh, the first thing on the agenda under correspondence. It's a minor, correspondence issued to a previously approved, um, application. Perhaps Graham can best explain what you're doing, but it's being done involving a township plot, and you've had the letter to the township attorney saying that the township has objections. Graham, can you, so would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Can you just limit your testimony now to the issue on the correspondence, we'll get to the other ones in a moment.
Yeah, just before, before we even hear that, I just wanna explain to the board members before we start, the congregation, Malo Satoro, you hear the name a lot, we've heard it for you many, 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 many times. However, you should be aware, there are actually only two projects, there's a total of two projects. There is the Chestnut Gardens project, and there's the Stamford, Stamford Hill project, I think we call it. Um, and being told by the applicant, we might carry the four oh two nine A, because all the, I think all the gentlemen sitting over there are objecting to the application, so the four oh two nine A, we need to carry. Um, before we do that one, um, I guess, well, let's start, let's start with the correspondence matter. Um, in essence, the correspondence matter relates to appeal number three-nine-six-seven, which is the Chestnut Gardens project. That project is fully approved. The only reason we're here tonight is that we are requesting that a portion of lot eighty-nine, in lot eleven fifty-nine, which Graham will show you momentarily, um, which was owned by the applicant and was included in that initial application that we've already approved, should be subdivided in accordance with the letter by the, from the township attorney, Mr. Seacare. In essence, the application is approved, required the vacating of many roads, and in, in exchange for vacating those streets, there was a new street that was going to be improved by the applicant. The township is essentially giving their appliessence to those road vacations, with, as long as they get this piece subdivided off, which will ultimately be given to the township, in order for the township to merge it with two lots that are owned by different township entities. Um, and I guess I'll let Graham explain in greater detail. Go for it, Graham.
I raised where you would.
Graham, Graham, well, first of all, I'm here, personal plan, just apart to A one, which, which I, uh, put up on display here. A one is a plan that shows, uh, that shows outline, that shows outlining, that shows outlining, right, two, two lots. One lot is lot thirty-four, the other lot is lot eighty-eight. Lot eighty-eight is currently owned by the fire commissioners, lot thirty-four is owned by the municipality. As Mary Ellen discussed, our original application for the Chestnut Gardens project, which is the due place project that has to translate on Chestnut Street, the board recalls, that extends back to, uh, this portion of the, uh, of, of the township. As part of that Chestnut Gardens application, street vacations are required. We approached the township, the township is in favor of street vacation, they had concern that, uh, those vacations may result in lot thirty-four not having a street coverage. So the town says, well, I tell you, if you, if you can subdivide lot eighty-nine, lot eighty-nine is a very narrow area, about nine feet wide, that was from Chestnut Street to these two subdivision lots. So you can see it highlighted in purple there, that little slipper in purple, now is, is, we're requesting that to be subdivided, and then those three, I thought those three parcels would be consolidated. So thirty-four, eighty-eight, or eighty, eighty-eight, and a portion of eighty-nine that we're requesting to be subdivided would be consolidated, resulting in one lot that would be dedicated to, to the town, or, or the township.
And the purpose of that is for street being, um, access to streets?
The purpose is so that one result of lot can be provided, which has access to public street, in accordance with the language laws, so it's a partial language lot. Um, and again, as Mary Ellen explained, lot eighty-nine, and that slipper that goes all the way, was part of our application for Chestnut, not for it, but the subdivision of lot eighty-nine was not shown, but we, we didn't yet have the benefit of having that input from the municipality as the county wanted to handle that little piece of, that little slipper subdivision, and the consolidation of thirty-four and eighty-eight.
Any questions from board members? Terry? See the, the right of honor?
I don't have any questions at this time, Chairman. When you hear the succeeding applications, you're gonna realize that they're kind of intertwined. But I, I don't, don't have any issues at this time.
Well, not, not so much this one.
Okay.
This, this one stands on its own with Chestnut.
All right, so, so this is not related to the ones that are on top?
Correct.
All right, I stand corrected, I'm fine, Chairman. So Jerry, what are we working on?
Well, Chairman, you have a letter from the township attorney indicating that the township would be in favor of this, because it deals with the street vacations and all of this. It, you don't need to, my recommendation is that you vote to approve with ring of course, and also send a letter to the township tomorrow. Done.
It sounds like just cleaning up the streets.
That's all it is, that's all it is.
And you're being, Terry, exactly, make a better, a better comment.
I'm not aware of, of this creating any adversities, like, after she requested it.
Terry's sounding more and more like a lawyer, as I know.
Terry's sounding like this because Terry will say this tonight. Just to be fair to Terry.
No, 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 we're gonna send, I'll take your, we're gonna send a letter out, that'll be fine.
So the administrative?
Exactly right. Like, please, please.
After that, I'm just, I was, how did this come about? So, did you have to go submit the site plan to the town, and then they came back and said they liked?
Well, we, we submitted, we submitted an application for street vacation to the municipality, and then talking, talking through what the town would, would require as part of the street, they came back to us and said, you know, you guys wanna vacate these streets, we, we, you know, typically aren't vacating streets anymore, but in this case, because these ways of ways are consumed by wetlands or floodwater areas, are really not usable. The town said, okay, we have no objection to that, that makes perfect sense. However, there is a technicality here that we wanna get cleaned up as part of that process, and let, now let's figure out how, how to do it.
And what, just, if you could just be a little bit on this technicality, just so I, I kinda get it.
Well, the actual, I, I'll, 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 I'll give you, take, take a step, take a step back for you. That lot eighty-nine, you know, I just put it out, that runs the entire length along the property. Lot eighty-nine, uh, was uncovered as a result of a survey that, frankly, that we did a couple of years back, where there was a gore, so we, so a strip of. we did a couple of years back, where there was a gore, so a, so a strip of land between adjoining parcels that did not have clear, clear ownership. Then that lot eighty-nine was assigned a separate tax number by, by the tax assessor, tax assessor said, yes, it is a separate, separate piece of site, and it's a separate tax number, so that made lots thirty-four and eighty-eight no longer, no longer connected, so they're, they're separated by this nine-foot-wide strip of land in, in between.
Okay. That became the township's piece of property?
Well, no, that became more, lot eighty-nine became my client's piece, piece of property, but now to make it, to make it proper, we're seeking to subdivide a piece of that, so it can be consolidated with thirty-four and eighty-eight.
Thank you.
So Jerry, I don't have to vote for this, this is a problem, this is a, this is a legal issue, so.
That's correct.
So board members, you've heard, we have to vote on this?
I would recommend, I would suggest that you consider a vote to advise me to tell the town, maybe we have no objection to this.
Motion to advise you. Motion by motion maker?
I'll second to motion you to advise you to vote together.
Seconded by Mayor Gelli, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Haberson?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Vivia?
Yes.
Mr. Inver?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you, good luck.
Mr. Dusty?
I've been.
Forty-twenty-nine-eight, congregation Malo Satoro.
Hold on, hold on, I think, I think that one's getting carried, let's, let's start with forty-one-oh-eight.
Okay, just a comment, are these all, all these people here?
Yeah, but I don't think they're here for forty-one-oh-eight, they're here for forty-twenty-nine.
Forty-twenty-nine-eight?
We have to vote.
Are they?
We have to vote.
Are they carrying forty-two-nine-eight? Forty-two-nine-eight, but it is a request to carry, because all these people are here for us, and we did not know they were going to be here for us until this evening, so they're going to sit down and, and. I didn't, I didn't know.
Forty-twenty-seven, we have seven members here, very seldom, and we're trying to get many applications on the spot. This particular application has come to us several times, with objectors, different types of situations, and I'm trying to figure out what length of time this is going to take to actually get this settled, either with the objections or not, and why can't we hear it today, what's the problem? You know, it would be better just hearing it, and hearing what the objections have to say.
Yeah, I'd like to do forty, I, I, my, what I'd like to do is forty-one-oh-eight first, because that's, that's a minor subdivision, and that's very simple, and that's not what they're here for.
That's what you said.
I have a form.
Okay, that's fine. Fine, so we're going to do appeal number forty-one-oh-eight, congregation Malo Satoro.
Chairman, on the new plan, the town seeks minor subdivision approval to subdivide two existing tracks into two new residential lots. The existing track consists of lot twenty-nine and thirty, and lot eleven fifty-nine point oh four, and contains sixty-seven thousand two hundred square feet. The proposed properties are designated as new lots twenty-nine point oh one through twenty-nine point oh two on the subdivision plan. No development is proposed. No existing or proposed utility information has been revised.
Thank you, okay, Mary, good evening, Mary Morynson, on behalf of the applicant congregation Malo Satoro East. This minor subdivision application is for lots, to subdivide lots twenty-nine and thirty into two new lots. The reason we are here, because I'm sure you're wondering that one, is because these two lots, twenty-nine and thirty, erroneously appear on both of the previous subdivisions. Remember, there were two previous applications for Chestnut Gardens, appeal number three-nine-six-seven, and appeal number forty-twenty-nine, which you already approved, by the way, without objectors, but the forty-twenty-nine A is the one that we're here to get an amended approval on tonight. For whatever reason, these same two lots appear actually on both subdivision maps. So when the applicant went to the county to get county approval for the Chestnut Gardens project, which is in final form, the county said they can't approve two applications on the same lots. So we're here tonight to create two new lots, proposed lot twenty-nine point oh one and twenty-nine point oh two, so that one would be the mother lot on one application, and the other one will be the mother lot on the other application. There is one variance for lot width, but again, just to clarify, these two lots will never really stand on their own. They're part of the mother lot for the, for the duplex applications that are, been approved. Sort of following? In other words, these, these two lots are part of the mother lot, I don't know why, but for some reason, the same two lots literally show up on both of the plans for each development. So the county said, we can't approve this, we can't possibly give you an approval if you have the same two lots showing on both the maps. So all we're really doing here is taking those two lots, subdividing them into two separate lots, so that one goes with one project, the other one goes with the other one, the various lot widths, I'll let Graham put on the record, the justification for it, but just so the board really understands, we're never doing anything with that lot on its own, it's always going to be part of that greater application for the, for the dup, for the full duplex project.
So what you're saying is that lot twenty-nine oh one, the new lot, is for the new, is already going to be part of the project that has been approved?
Correct.
And then twenty-nine oh two is going to be held for future?
That's part of forty-twenty-nine, that's part of forty-twenty-nine, which actually was approved, but we're coming back for revised approval on, yes.
But it was part of the approved?
Yes, 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 yes.
So required to be approved?
Yeah.
So now you're taking it away?
No, no, no. No.
So this is not, this is not allowed as the development of buildings, to be absorbed into one of the developments?
Correct.
Therefore, when you make those lots, that should be part of it?
Correct, it's also a cleanup measure, it's really a cleanup measure. It's because there was a mistake in the previous plans, and the same two lots showed up on two, on two, on two maps, so we have to subdivide them to make one part of one, and the other one part of the other.
So, so the only reason why you need a variance at all, is only because you have to separate the two?
Yes.
It's not going to, it's not extended, it's not going to extend it to any other variance in the future?
Correct.
It's just that we can move this project forward?
Correct. So better than I did, thank you.
As a matter of fact, the lot that needs the variance has a stream going through, so I don't even know if that's already been built on.
That too.
It really is a cleanup.
I just, I just want to get Jerry's next question, because you don't mind.
I'm sorry?
If, if you can explain it to me, it's all right?
Well, yeah.
If you don't mind, I'll say.
New lot twenty-nine oh one, here, this is the lot that needs a, this is the lot that needs a width variance, this has a stream going right through the middle.
Yeah.
Got that?
Yeah.
And, and that is part of the one application which is being approved. And planing with.
So back, back here, again.
I'm sorry?
She said something about a, a number being put into maps, is that what it was?
Well, this is part of that approval, this new lot is part of the other approval. I don't know which way it goes.
I'm trying to figure out the sentence.
That's the problem.
I don't know, but that is the problem, that's what I said, it's really cleanup.
Neither subdivision was ever flawed on second?
Yeah, correct, it couldn't, it can't be, because we'd have to.
I think it's important to explain that to the board.
You're right.
In, in the benefit of hindsight, this minor subdivision should have been part of the application when the site plan was approved, you have to make it, for whatever reason it wasn't, this really didn't.
So this is a mistake from some office, some applications?
Yes, it, it should have been, should have been resolved at the time of the original application, apparently the county is the one who worked, not the back.
Why is the county, the applicant who applied to an application, used the same lot twice?
Well, they tried for three or four times.
The only thing tricky was this. Now, Jerry, that need the case, this has, and this has, will this happen, this has to be also a street public?
Yes, yes, it's a minor subdivision, it's a minor subdivision, and a whole variance in the lot width, and I.
If I could just add tonight, Chairman, as indicated in our letter under Zoney, you also have design waivers technically required with respect to Powell Avenue, Clinton Avenue, Gates Avenue, as far as improving, as well as curving sidewalk. As Jerry indicated, most of these properties are wet, however, that is required. Secondly, similarly, you also have design waiver required for shade trees, and shade tree until these is along the approved properties.
How, how is that?
Good, if you, if it wasn't part of the original application, only one application that had been claimed for the approval on either application?
It would have been approved the first time around.
Okay.
I don't say it's no brand, or it's a very.
Jerry, just that, if they're both, they're both the same owners, we have this, this lot split into two applications, what's the problem with making that one full B application? And then figure out exactly what's going on? Here, it seems like there's some hiding, or something like that, we don't know what's going on.
Well.
We have one B application, we have one project, there's duplexes all over the place, make one B application, show us what's going on.
Well, Mr. Natale, right now you have a minor subdivision in front of you, and that's what we have in front of you this evening. I can understand what you're saying, there's another application on for amended use of site plan approval on the, sorry, that's a consideration that we might want to think about, about another.
Mr. Dusty, let me ask a question, if this, if we look forward, for that which reason, would you deny this application?
It is denied?
Yeah, what's denied?
If I could speak to that, you have one approval, you would have to come back with amended approval to deal with the same properties, because I believe in all of them.
Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, so you have to. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, so we got?
Yes, sir. Yes, the other alternative would be, we could come back with an amended application for, can the Chestnut Gardens property that was out, was out of Chestnut, and that was already approved by this board, that would be outside of the state, outside of the state approvals. If the board for some reason felt compelled to not allow this minor subdivision, we'd have to come back and amend that Chestnut Gardens application, to show the subdivision. To show the subdivision of lots twenty-nine and thirty as part of that application, which would accomplish the same exact thing as minor subdivision.
Now, if, if that were to occur, I must advise you, I don't think that that would open up the doors, relit the whole application again, all you're going to do is end that property to the, and it's probably the stream going.
My question is not to give anybody a hard time, just I'm trying to understand what, what's the application, what's going on?
What's going on here?
You know, we're, we're just trying to put our hands around, what's the application?
Well, why don't you testify as to what this application is about, Mr. Natale?
Well, again, as, as we've been discussing, this application is about subdividing twenty-nine, twenty-nine and thirty, which lot, currently to A1, which is a minor subdivision plan. Twenty-nine and thirty, the lot line currently runs horizontal, just say horizontally across, across, across the paint. What we're proposing to do is take that lot line, away that lot line, make new lot line run vertically across that, that, that coincides with the two applications that have been presented to, to this board.
Why wasn't this done at the time of the original application? I think that's really the question we have.
Well, it, it, it could have been done before those applications were, were filed, and we could have created at least lots twenty-nine oh one and twenty-nine oh two, which resulted in the same thing that we're asking to do, to do right now. When the two applications were, were being put together, we want to circle which application, you know, may, 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 you know, go faster than other applications, there are different owners involved in two applications, same applicatories, but there are different owners involved in the property, so there was some consideration given to that. So when we drew the plans originally, we sat down with Robert Provo, decided to have a, a definitely application, right, we did talk about it this afternoon, and told them that we did have something to tell them about it, but at the end of the day, what needs to be done is, the twenty-nine thirty, whether it's part of two other applications, or whether it's a minor subdivision that has standard on the bill, which should be filed over the top. The same result happened, Mr. Dusty, which was, was discussed, and you could see on A1, that much, most of twenty-nine oh one is assumed by the right-hand side's streetcar or area in market, these lots cannot be developed on their own, so it's really, so it's really technical that we have to take this step at this time, just break these two lots, one will go through the Chestnut, the third one is fifty-seven, twenty-nine oh two will go through the forty-twenty-nine application, and that will happen, and we'll follow on what we see.
If I approve this application, are we increasing the density in either one of the two applications?
No.
Makes, it makes absolutely no difference, other than the cleanup.
Makes no difference. Makes no difference in the application, and I'm going to call the technical merits of the application, the nature of the development, no, no, no difference to what you, you, you call the approval.
So I, I'm comfortable to say that the only reason the county had an issue with this is because of that, it was a conflict of the number of the lots, and not, you know, if you were to change, if they didn't want to prove it for the others, other than, you know, if they should have been on any of the lots instead of one lot, but we all know the other.
Sorry, can I finish on this, man?
Yes.
There was a first application, and you may have to correct me on this, because this is fifty-seven terms, there was an application, SP twenty-three eighteen, correct? Which was planned for, so that wasn't, that wasn't the first one?
No.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's the plan for application for the lots on sale.
That's, that's something else, you're going to mix them up with that.
Okay, all right, so that's related to forty-two-nine-eight?
That's related to forty-two-nine-eight.
Okay, all right.
Thirty-nine sixty-seven was the, was the first one for the other, the other application, Chestnut Gardens.
Now, we're not complaining, but this is getting much worse than that, just to know.
What, which project was it originally?
The existing lots now are here and here, okay? When they went to the county, they realized they should go here. It doesn't matter, nobody's going to build on this one, it just gets added to the subdivision map, the big subdivision map that eventually is filed. The problem was, somebody didn't see this the first time around. This lot, I, I don't know what they did on the old application, I don't know, but right now, this is one, and this is one, now it's going to be this way.
Okay.
That's it.
Hey, thank you, Jerry. Any other question from board members here, none? Can I open appeal number forty-one-oh-eight, anyone from the public want to be heard? Please step forward.
Brian Clonery, Jackson, Missouri.
Raise your right hand, it's a big sport. Do you swear or affirm, the town voters, so we got?
I do. I, I, the applicant's leads, this leads owns the piece of property, block twenty in the same lot, and just as the applicant has confused the board, and some of the public with the ongoings, they confused this lead's as well. Her concern, as she stated when the prior application, thirty-nine sixty-seven came in, is that this applicant on either of the two projects doesn't adversely impact her lot by either grading or drainage. She had a topographic survey done of her lot, which is lot twenty, I don't know if we have an X map, but to see where that is, and the basis of my letter is to say she would like to see topographic information on her lot, on any of the applications, because she's not sure which one is which, or what's going on. And.
Her lot, looking at aerial, that lot twenty is down here. The, 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 the minor subdivision is appropriate here.
Mr. Blount, I know that we've talked about this a few times, unless, unless that's a new letter, is that the one?
This is, this is a new letter, I'd like to hand that out to the board.
I haven't seen that one yet.
No, this is, this is a new one.
But, but we all understand that by law, the impact, the drainage impact to your client's property cannot be adversely increased.
Yes.
As a result of this.
Yes.
So we can't do it.
She, yes, and she asked me to write a letter to hand out to the board, I'd like to do that, and then the board can continue with the applications and, and do what the board does. Thank you very much.
Okay. I know that from previous applications, this property owner is concerned that the, her lot might be watched out or something like that, and obviously, that would be against the law, and very well, you would never allow.
And a kind of minor subdivision, we've been doing that many years.
Just to, just to understand, Brian, are you for this or against this?
I don't have this number.
No, I don't disagree.
I, I'm, I'm in protest mode, just conveying my client's, I, I, this minor subdivision, I think should have been done before the applications, I understand the dilemma, the dilemma was, they didn't know which one was going first. Normally, you'd do one, you'd file the map, then you'd have new lot numbers when you did the second. This went back and forth so often that, that it didn't happen. If, if they knew this was coming, if they had a crystal ball, they would have just done this before they even started, because as Jerry indicates, it's the property along the stream, and, and chopping it up. But all Miss Leeds wants is them to agree to put topo for her lot on any of their applications, so that somebody can look it up and say, it's not going to be.
No, I think that's a terrible precedent. That's a terrible precedent. I don't think you should get into. I don't think you should get into the precedent of being required for two topos on other properties. There is a requirement that they not adversely from drainage damage. It affects anybody's property, period. That's what we should vote against, people are here for.
Anybody else from the, from the, wants to talk to this man?
Would you raise your right hand, Adam, would you? You swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Start your last name, please.
Lori Leeds, L-E-E-D-S.
Thank you.
All right. The problem is that I have to have my typo on my lot for this, these plans, because if I don't, they're going to grade a road, a few roads, and if they don't have my typo, they don't know how to grade the road so that my lot will not be flooded or ruined. It's a million dollar lot, and I need to have that typo there. And he doesn't want to put it there. He just tells that they said that, that they won't do it, but there's no way, Mr. Flannery and another engineer told me that there's no way they could not flood it or do what he said they have in, in the, where is it, in the resolution, if they don't have the typo. How do they know how to grade it? And it's not fair that we treat it that way. Every single lot in this whole thing has typos. Even lot 90, which is not even in the plan, they have a typo for that, and they won't put mine in. And I just paid $3,000 to get a typo done. And that's all I'm asking for.
I think we, this was on the prior application, I think it's that one, I'm going to look for the letter that I think Mr. Flannery sent to you a few months ago.
I can't hear you too well. Now, I have a typo. I have more than typos. Can I hand them to you, so you can see what I'm talking about?
We're actually not engineers here. We hear the applications and we hear what you have to say. We actually defer you to our engineer, because he's the one that adds the professional listen to be able to tell us graphically, typo, uh, topos on actual land. So you can be unsure, and I just want to assure you that, that I don't think anything's going to be built without any engineer here looking to make sure that everything is proper and that there are no wetlands or anything like that that are going to affect anybody else's property.
May I take a chance on this, Jerry?
All right.
Graham, I, I may need your help on this, please. Miss Leeds, any application that we receive that has any major construction work, a road, for example, by state law, there are very strict rules in terms of what has to be done to manage stormwater. If it's what's known as a major development, which the major subdivision that's on tonight, I think Graham will agree, is major development as defined in state regulations, they have to actually reduce stormwater rates that leave the site, whether it's your site or someone else's site, for the smaller storms and even the larger. They have to make a proof that their stormwater measures reduce the rates versus existing conditions.
Without the typo, they can't guarantee.
They are going to.
I don't.
Ma'am, please.
I have what the law says.
Ma'am, please. Where they are going to be doing work, they must provide us the body. Graham, would you like to, to speak?
Well, I have one, well, why can't he take mine?
Because where you have your topography done, I'm fairly sure is not where he's building.
Yes, I did have it done by a certified company.
Miss Leeds, you have a, as I recall from a few months ago, when you and I talked about this quite a few times, you have, as I understand it, a topography of your lot, which is fine. That's what the man charged you $3,000 for. Now, if after this development is constructed, you certainly have the right to have your, the topography of your lot again.
No, I'm not going to do it after it's constructed. And I don't want to have to go to court, and I will go next week. And I will sue, and I don't care, because you're going to put my topography on my lot.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
I don't think that it's right, and, and, and that you won't accept it. Why?
Sure, put it in the file.
I give it to you. Thank you. That's all I want. If anyone put it on the page.
Thank you, Miss Leeds.
Thank you, Miss Leeds. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Would like to be heard on a field number 4108? Please come forward.
I can add something quick.
We have a number more here, please.
Graham, you're going to tape Miss Lee's survey as part of your design. You're going to review and make sure that there's no impacts off-site, including Miss Lee's property.
That's, that's, and again, just for understanding, that's something to do with my decision. And you're actually referring to the application.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
I am. H-I-R-S-E-A.
I'm so lucky that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
How was it? I'm glad that this, thankfully, it was snow, so I'm stuck, I'm stuck in town, so I can actually show up to this meeting. And then there was an error, the last application, which, point to what I understand, is an error, thank God the county caught it. Well, that, I would guess, that would invalidate the previous approval. Well, the problem is, we can't account every single person, everyone in Chestnut area. Problem is here, this applicant has gone, has made everyone dizzy, no one even knows what he's looking for. He's made two applications, when it should be one major one, number one. Number two, he shouldn't have even been doing this, because it was a master plan that was changed certain zones only after traffic improvements on Chestnut, it went on the Chestnut Street on both sides. And he keeps playing around, pointing to planning board, the zoning board, and this is an ongoing matter the last few years. If we don't make it to one meeting, this is what happens. Most thankfully, there was a mess-up, and now we get to reexamine this whole case. Because this should have never been approved, based on the current master plan. There was actually no traffic improvements at Chestnut. We are getting sandwiched in, it's becoming a dangerous situation by improving, and by allowing more, I know he gave it in December, but thankfully it was an error. County, the county got our back on that one, they wouldn't allow it to go through, because that's why they're here today. He has the technicality, but the application is void, because it did not apply. It had lots on two different ones. It was, it was an error, and that's why it's here now. Let me remind you, we're not here to accommodate investors, yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Smith, can you take it outside, please? Thank you.
It's nice, investors should definitely deserve a return on their money, that's fine. But when they stop coming in and abusing and leeching off of the local residents, that's a problem. When we're getting swatched in, we cannot move, and then eating in all these duplexes they snuck in, because I can tell you, they have come to board, if the board, it's hard to keep up with these meetings, to catch every single one of these applications. It's been going, we have truly had a few, the planning boards have a number, all the same lots. Why? Because this usually, this usually someone has an issue with, our whole neighborhood has issues with this. And you found one meeting in December where we weren't there. So thankfully, I am here, and I'd like to say, based on this mess-up, thankfully, we can now reexamine this, it should have never been approved in the first place, because it's a violation of the master plan that the county completely had passed. And it should never, and should not be improved at this point, so go right back.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to be heard on this application 4108? Please come forward.
I swear or affirm to tell the whole truth. I'm from, I wish I had done this, the I M F 212, Boulevard Lake in New Jersey, 08701. So I learned tonight that there were lots of typos and all the topo work that was done. So I want to give the, I'm just trying to figure out the grading of the installation here, grading, you know? Before that, if anyone has a hard time keeping track of all the lots, blocks on, feel free to follow that. But I'm just trying to understand, I'm just trying to understand the lot that was, that was approved on the first map, and all that, oh, I'm not pro or against you, I wish I'm all, both sides. I just want to understand, the, the lot that was approved last time, that was for the last.
I want to make one point clear, I don't want to cut you off, okay? I just wanted to hear and discuss you on application 4108.
That's my question.
Your lots and everything else have nothing to do with the last one, it's irrelevant. We're discussing 4108.
I just said, I'm asking on these lots, you and him tonight, this lot, this application that's in front of you, these particular lots, which are particularly suited for this particular zone, these lots, the one that was connected to the last application, that was after county, yada, yada, was it built yet or was it not built yet? That's my question.
It's not been built.
Thank you, I don't want to say, but you were the answer. Okay, so it was not built yet, but it was part of the application that was built, or the rest of that application was not from? Okay. Thank you, that's all my question, and I give them a grading and all that, yes.
Anyone else wants to be heard on field number 4108? Please come forward.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, you have to affirm to tell the whole truth.
Yes, I do.
Activate your full name, Spayla.
Chaim Sabag, S-A-B-B-A-G-H, 11 Golders Green, Stanford Meadows, Chestnut. 11 Golders Green Road, Stanford Meadows Development, or Chestnut Village. Basically, we're not agreed to this, because we have a full, we don't understand what's really happening. And of subject, the next ruling that we're supposed to carry, this might change a lot of graphical situations of what's going to happen with that situation. So until we get a clear understanding of what they want to do, and like Mr. Hirsch said, there's a lot of changes, which is creating a lot of traffic, even with the next subject, the application that we want to get approved is going to create a lot of traffic into the development that we're currently talking about, and I think so, it's combined with both subjects. So we're, we're appealing to that.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to be heard? Aaron, I close it to the public. Does anybody from the board have any other questions on this particular application? Mr. West, can you just clarify exactly, this application, if we approve it, does it make any difference to any of the applications on the right and the left?
It's not changing what has already been approved on the application on the right and on the application on the left. Just to clarify, both the application on the right and the application on the left have already been approved, and just for the benefit of clarity, the amendment, and what they're talking about, is an amendment to, I don't know if it's the right or left, but the 4029 project, the one that extends Golders Green Road development that gentleman lives on, that one, what the applicant is here for, was supposed to be here tonight, was to add units to that development.
Mary, please stop, the question was, does this, but, now, you're only 41.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Only general would like to talk about it, as we're going through the door.
Jerry, I think, I think the board members are confused.
No, they're.
Mr. Geller, you're right, I love you.
It's not confusion, just, it's yes or no. If we approve this application, does it change anything as far as the approvals that were done already?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you very much. All right, so then, can I get a vote on the split of the lot, basically, Jerry? That's what it is.
The other two applications, both included those lots in their application. Now, you know, and that could be offensive.
On 4108, can I get a motion, please? Make a motion to approve the splitting of lots. Motion, yes, of the lot. Motion by Mayor Geller, I get that. Second by Juna Rubiak, Road Congress.
Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Teller.
Yes.
Mr. Rivia.
Yes.
Mr. Inver.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take five minutes recess, we'll be right back. Thank you. Again, I just want to remind everybody, I want total silence in here. If you need to speak, please step outside. I want to move this application accordingly. So you have my right of...
Go ahead.
On forty twenty nine A.
Oh, that's, that's...
Now have that... This is how easy.
Wait, we're going to withdraw it.
Okay, okay, wait. Ms. Weisney.
Yes.
First of all, appeal number forty twenty nine A, please.
Appeal number forty twenty nine A, the applicant is going to withdraw the application in light of the fact that we found out tonight that there are this many objectors. He's going to sit down with the objectors, he's going to meet with them. And we'll proceed at a later date.
Okay, great, so therefore...
That's right. Unless you particularly wanted to hear it.
Uh, Jerry, do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, you should accept the withdrawal.
Okay, we accept the withdrawal. Can we get a motion on appeal number forty twenty nine A? Motion. By Mayor Langtry?
By Mayor Langtry.
He did a vote.
I like to read motion out.
Right. Second by Lashin Adal. Second by, uh, Judar Rumiak. Judar?
All right, Mr. Nick. Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Mr. Halbison.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Lattal.
Yes.
Mr. Vivian.
Yes.
Mr. Inver. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so all of you that are here on appeal number forty twenty nine A, which is the other congregation, Marcos La Torra. It is not being heard, it's actually being withdrawn. And they'll come whenever they feel that they're ready.
We'll get a new notice.
We'll get a new notice and everything else. Right now it's being withdrawn, this application is... Just... Yeah! Thank you. Quietly, please, I want to take this, going forward. Thank you. With the next sign, just come in here quiet. Elite party. Going forward.
Actually, Jerry, for you to that. Jerry, Jerry, on, on application forty one O eight, you have directed a proposed resolution. Does that...
Down to our resolution.
So, okay, that will be voted on in a minute.
Yes.
Wonderful. Good.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Weisney? Oh, forty one, okay. Now we're going to appeal number forty one O five, Avery Weiss. Forty one O two is Perry.
Forty one O five. Fifty no four Madison Avenue.
Guys, again, outside, if you need to speak to, I need total silence in here. Thank you.
To the lateral office. The cherry voted near plan February eighteen twenty nineteen. The applicant requests you stay, we need to convert an existing residence into a professional office. Only interior building is under control at this time.
What? Come on. Yeah.
First of all.
Thank you.
Mr. Langsky, would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear or affirm that all three are all we got? Do you?
This is, this is, Mr. Geller, this is the, this is the Avery Weiss.
I have to go on.
He was, he was on my legal notice list. So I couldn't imagine he sitting on it.
Okay, so because Mr. Geller is part of the two hundred feet, he must have found this application.
Asking for a use case and that's his duty or going to...
Yeah, just wanting, I do, I know he lives within two hundred feet. I noticed him, so I wanted to make sure we're all good.
All right, so you understand that unless six people below your use case, okay?
We do understand that.
Okay.
And we're still proceeding. Thank you so much. Um, Mary Weisney, on behalf of the applicant Avery Weiss. This application is for an approval to convert an existing residence into a professional office. Um, the applicant has a commercial lending business. Almost everything is done via email. Clients do not visit the site. There are currently two employees plus the owner. Just to put this into perspective, the property is located in the R twelve zone. Offices are not permitted in the R twelve zone, other than as conditional accessory use within residence and meet all the required conditions. As it turns out being that there are only two employees besides the actual owner. Theoretically, if the applicant were to live in this house, this would actually even comply under the requirements of the R twelve standards as a home office. Um, this property fronts on a very busy portion of Route nine. This is on Route nine and Fifteenth Street. Um, hardly an appropriate location for a residence where anybody would want to try to bring up their, their small children. And hence the reason this was sold recently, um, to be converted into an office. The applicant is merely reconfiguring the interior of the home as an office. And they may make the actual exterior facade look a little bit nicer. But there will not be any structural changes or additions. And he's sort of going to retain the residential character. We understand that next quarter, this on Fifteenth Street is in fact a residence and is a residential neighborhood. The only variance we leave being sought is for existing conditions, for lot area, as well as for front yard setback. The front yard setback, incidentally, I think we can all agree, is de minimis at twenty nine point seven feet, where thirty feet is required. Uh, the lot area, I mean, we won't put my testimony, but it's existing. We're not, we're not changing anything. Those are the only variances. And with that, Glenn has actually sworn, right?
He has missed.
He's been sworn. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Glenn and allow him to actually performally on the record, uh, more the positive and negative criteria for the use variance.
Please, I was, uh, merely indicating where a building in the property fits on the corner of Fifteenth Street and, uh, Route nine. Uh, I have a overlay of the local map on the side lane. Uh, it's, I'll find out. Property in question is, uh, is the one on the corner. Basically, the southeast corner of Madison and Fifteenth Street. Just in the north of us in the OT zone. Is a real estate office, I believe it in the corner, but it's other offices next to it. The first street from our property is, uh, the Seminole. There is a residential house also on the opposite side of Fifteenth Street. Around closing, any site movements. Could use existing parking. We, based on the square footage of the building, who we'd need, we would require five spaces. Uh, we really do not need them based on the use of the, of the office. We only need two in the driveway and one in the street. If we were to widen and make the driveway wider so you could fit another car in, we'd actually lose the on-street parking. So it's a balance of what's there is sufficient for our needs rather than lose some on-street parking.
Question, Jerry, just based upon your analysis, Mike. Do you need parking in our business or do you require...
No, we, we require reason. Based on, the building is fourteen hundred and eighty square feet. And one space for three hundred, we would require five.
All right, and you propose...
We have two on some.
All right, thank you. So we are requesting a waiver from...
It says, it says a waiver from... Other than that, everything else that's existing is existing ten thousand square feet. Actually, if I could correct, I'm sorry, Jerry. Um, the way that we typically interpret heat, heat code, although there is gray. If it's a nine hundred required, that zone codes, we interpret that as a pass-through. If it's eight hundred, technically eight hundred is designed to be. In this case, it's eight hundred, just like...
Just understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, other than that, it, it just need that, that's where the law for all that required. I would give it the one, uh, very minor semi-variance to, or the existing building, you know, opposing any changes. That's an existing addition.
Twenty nine point seven seven with thirty feet square.
I want you to stay the same.
Any question from board members?
Yes, I have it.
Please.
Uh...
Is this your car, you need use of commercial or is it your car, you need use of residential?
Residential. Okay, I, I don't... Um, there's, once block over, there's another avenue. Has to be over here, it's not commercial. And they have to give enough block where cars can turn around and never have to back out onto, you know, none. And, and to keep two or three at having, when I'm, you know, turn around and having to back out on the ground, I don't...
No, we, the access to the, to the property on Fifteenth is not a...
No.
Not a good story. I apologize. So I didn't clarify that, I tested. And, no, existing driveway is on Fifteenth.
If you needed to, could you add more parking?
If we needed to, we could. We're going to lose some of the very nice mature trees around the property. Basically, we have to... Two-part driveway.
No, I, I, if you needed to.
You need to...
Right now you only have two people working there and sometime in the future you need, need a six. Yeah, a six. And you add parking, you can...
Absolutely.
Is there, you mentioned in your, your discussion that if you cut the driveway, make it wider, you lose one on the side. Well, street parking, and I'm just, if you do that though, but you have two in the driveway. So you would actually...
So you would actually have four, and, you know, I, I see that the building is definitely being built for future growth. You're, you're renovating it to three offices, a conference room, and an open area. It doesn't sound like it's a person who's going to be having one person working from a very long. So I, I would like to see, um, a minimum of four, you need five, I would like to see a minimum of four. They'll need me later on, they can, they can add if needed, but...
Just, you know, the main office is based in New York, and you have to consider, and he can testify to that effect. The main office is in New York, this is the satellite office, it was the late forty-eight, the, the, he has two people working for the office. He's here for Tom, Tom, that's the third one. He does not have a home, he's to make this into some more...
I understand, but he's renovating a building that is, it's going to be used. At some point, it's going to be used, and by the time it's been rented out, it'll be stupid. He doesn't, he's not going to invest money to make it into an office, three offices, open area, and space for work, unless somebody's going to be there. I mean, otherwise, he could rent the place for a hell of a lot less than this. He just has one person. I'd like to see more parking places, man.
Uh?
Yeah. I can't say I studied the area very well, but are there other residential homes, uh, down the street?
Yeah. On, on Fifteenth. Fifteenth is, is all residential.
All residential, so my concern is that we approve this, so that someone, that could be a tramp, doing a war application to change the name of that, to change the topic.
No, because Fifteenth Street, Mr. Gelli lives on Fifteenth Street. It is, Fifteenth Street is a very residential, is a very residential block. This house, no, but this house fronts on Route nine, nobody's going to live in this house, I, I think it was vacant previously.
But that's not his question, his question is, is this is allowed to become a personal? What happens to the house right next to it?
So it, it doesn't, it, it, in my opinion, it, it, it doesn't set precedent for what's on Fifteenth Street, for why you're approving on Route nine. It's two different avenues, without that.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
There's one thing I can get on the record, Glenn, uh, I don't believe that you were here at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, there was a discussion with all of the community property, I believe it was on fifty-eight, lot one.
Yes.
And there, there was a concern that they believe that there's, there's an existing gas line that runs along Madison Avenue, along your frontage, and possibly go near the property. Would we inform the resident, and Josh Smutler was aware?
Right, I spoke with the resident.
Okay.
And, and, and we will, uh, we will locate where their gas line is on our, we're going to call for a market, locate that on our plan, and put a note on the plan that any construction within ten feet of the gas line, uh, you know, will require extra care if there isn't. We don't, we don't intend for there to be any construction on the Madison Avenue side, on Route nine, but I know the concern is that the, uh, gas line running, uh, probably in the right way, just looking on the page. All right, so we'll locate your offices, going to ensure that that's the only... Yes, we will take care of it.
Thank you.
Any other question from board members?
Is there going to be a basement?
There is one out.
There is an...
If this application is approved, is the basement going to be a separate unit?
No, no, there's no intention for it to be a separate unit, residential, anything like that. Currently, it's a playroom for the house.
What type of offices is this?
He runs a commercial lending business, commercial mortgages. Professional ones, not medical.
Okay, okay, anyone from the board that want to hear appeal number forty-one oh five, please step forward. Turning none, I close it to the public. Any other board members have any questions? South of Park. West of Park, even Park, it seems to be a question.
Did you, yeah, I saw you spoke to your client, so do you speak through about parking, any of the parking spaces?
That's what the board wants, that's what they're doing.
That's what the board wants. Make a motion with, uh, yes. I couldn't do that, did I? The slot can be anywhere on the property, just get more parking on the property in a safe, in a safe location.
They make the, they make the driveway just something wide, that they had three, I guess, buildings around.
Eric, take, take away the...
Well, I, I, with all due respect, I, I want the director to specify how many towns are complying with parking spaces at once, if you're going to have a favor. Do you want three, four, five, eight?
Glenn, how many? I just want to remind the board members that they need your, for waiver on the parking spaces.
Um, actually, Glenn just, Glenn just indicated that he can get in two more parking spaces, so four spaces, he can go away from Route nine. So that would be, I think, what the board, that he'd, the board...
Get the spot, spots in there safely?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so that's four spaces versus the code department of five.
So it's no big point.
So it reduces to three.
All right, okay, that's the motion. Okay, I have a motion by, motion nine-three, and second by Avram Natale, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli. Mr. Gelli, Mr. Mr. Alvinson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Vivias.
Yes.
Mr. Inver.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, provided that those four parking spaces have been mentioned in the resolution, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more. And number thirty-nine seventy-one B, KG Investments.
KG Investments.
Thank you.
Seven twenty Ocean Avenue, Lot five forty-eight, Lot six, twenty-one, twenty-three, old head zone. Mended use variance, on Terry Road Engineer Plan, January twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. The applicant received a variety of use variance, who will allow for the construction of a two-story office building with a catering facility in the basement, parking and amenities on the subject property, to the resolution of thirty-nine seventy-one. The property contains two single-family dwellings, and appearances between the people, which would be removed if the office building is constructed.
Mr. Clonan, would you raise your right hand, do you swear or, is this the first one you've testified in faith on, on behalf of an athlete? How's Perry going to eat this without a question? Do you swear or affirm that all three are all we got?
I do, I'm Clonan Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer of special plans, and thank you for your concern, though. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and I don't doubt that I represent the applicant. Uh, the board member called, I think everybody here was, uh, on the board a couple of years ago, or before the board, uh, seeking a very similar application, uh, to this. Uh, I do want to just run on the record that, uh, at the time of, when we came in about two and a half years ago, uh, the church, who was right next door, did appear, there's a representative of the church here as well, as well as they're represented by the witness, uh, attorney. Um, I had some conversations, they had two concerns, uh, but we just clarified that we're only holding on our property. Uh, the second one, and, and, we'll look at the application, they just wanted some, um, fence in, in between their property and ours, and we would be, uh, sort of, depending on the, the property, uh, proper, uh, between the two.
Did you discuss this six-foot, four-foot?
I believe they were about four-foot, I believe...
Where about four-foot?
Vinyl?
Which, which property lines you talking about?
I'm sorry, they are, it's a yearly property. Eastly, eastly property.
And eastly sideline property, or is...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Four-foot vinyl, two-four-foot, final, with the, uh, four-foot vinyl fence.
And so if the board does seem, uh, you know, to approve it, we would ask that be a condition of the, uh, the rule. Uh, at this time, I have, as American plan, I agree with you, so walk us through the application, and remind the board, uh, if we were here previously, or if we are, uh, voting to see it.
I, I have two cases, for eight, eight-one is the sheet four of the set of plans, that shows the proposed two-story building with the, uh, basement, uh, with the catering wall, and the, uh, associated, uh, hundred forty-nine parking spaces surrounding it. Eight-two is a, uh, act that remind the board of why they approved the use variance in the OSP zone, it was the OS zone at the time, uh, and they, they currently changed the, the destination to OSP zone. But, uh, clearly, the, the board saw the, our argument at that point, that the property is owned in properly, it's existing lots, uh, there's, uh, houses on lots, with a church next to it, uh, the open space relation, and though, and everything else makes a lot of sense, the open space at this time did not make that. The board granted the use variance, we need a, uh, amended use variance, because the conditions of the approval the first time was that, uh, we wouldn't ask credit relief on the parking, and that, um, uh, uh, we wouldn't ask for, uh, a, any, any variances. Uh, so, uh, of the, and, and the catering wall would not be larger than six thousand square feet. So the, the catering wall does exceed six thousand square feet, uh, and, and the main reason for that is that we came back for cycling approval, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, we had a three-story building, and what we were trying to say is that we had a shared parking arrangement, so we had enough parking for all the office with the hundred forty-nine parking spaces, and everybody in the office would be gone, and that same hundred forty-nine parking spaces was good for the, uh, the catering wall. Uh, we eliminated the third story, so we no longer have a, a height problem, we're here with two stories. The two stories would require a hundred nineteen parking spaces, uh, for the office use, we have a hundred forty-nine. Uh, so we do have a situation where we have the overlapping, uh, parking. If, if you look at a parking demand, and the only one that really applies similar to this would be, uh, for, uh, the shools, shools have a one per hundred square feet, we have seventy-two hundred square feet, which is greater than six thousand, is broken into two, it's something that, that is needed for the area, the two smaller ones. That would say we need seventy-two parking spaces. Uh, the hundred forty-nine, we have well more than that, uh, and, and the, that leaves seventy parking spaces for somebody that stays around the office in the evening when the, when the wall is being used, there's seventy-two. I, I don't think you see a situation where a hundred and nineteen are required, and seventy-two people stay around. Maybe, maybe my generation, years ago, did that and stayed that late, but, uh, I, I, I know office buildings, and and when four o'clock comes around, eighty percent of people are gone. So it's my professional testimony, that although the, the, there's not really a clear what parking would be required for the simple wall, then the closest thing is the, uh, the shools, uh, and, and that at one per hundred, I, I think works as similar to what you would see, uh, like with the, the Lake Terrace, they, they advertise an eighteen thousand, uh, square feet, and they have three hundred parking spaces. We're, you know, seven thousand versus eighteen thousand, and we're going to have a hundred forty-nine minus however many people stay there at work. Uh, I think the board's concern was that the parking worked, I think we're here now with a plan that, that does show the parking works. Uh, and, and I can go through the rest of the items in the report.
I can just interject quickly, Chair, and Brian, I'm not sure if you talked about submission waivers or V I F. Um, you, you have a few in here, uh, you have a waiver, the E I S, which, um, the property is previously developed, which would be logical. Uh, and, uh, there, there was discussion, uh, about submission to the Ocean County Planning Board, uh, as well as traffic study.
Uh, and, and, yes, we're still asking for those, uh, as submission waivers, obviously, we're going to go to the Ocean County Planning Board, uh, and, and that requires a traffic study, we're on, uh, Route eighty-eight, they're also going to require a traffic study. So, uh, prior to making those submissions, we wanted to make sure that the board agree with us that what we're proposing makes sense. Uh, and, and we're asking for those waivers just, uh, prior to submission, we certainly understand those will be required and will be submitted.
So for the board's purposes, other than the E I S, which we don't have an issue with, the traffic study and the county planning board submission, you're requesting waivers for hearing purposes of?
Yes.
You are going to propose?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Uh, and you're going to talk about zoning waivers, I assume?
Yes. Yes, so, uh, the first item in Terry's report under zoning waivers indicates that we need an amended use variance, because a couple of conditions, uh, the, specifically, I think, the, the biggest one is the six thousand square foot. Uh, and, and we're at, we're at seventy-two hundred, which isn't substantially different, and I think at the time, the board was looking at something that made sense, given that we were trying to say, we're going to use all that parking during the day, and the excess will be used in the evening. Now we're providing thirty more than we need during the day, so that when the evening comes around, we do have the, the excess. Uh, from, from my, uh, experience in Lakewood, I, I think that makes sense, and, and I think from other facilities around, um, it, you know, makes sense. And, and I think the parking, obviously, the board is going to have to make the decision on that, is that sufficient parking, and does it make sense to go from six thousand to seventy-two hundred, uh, and, and the, the, the simple wall is broken into two small halls, which I think also encourages the type of functions that, uh, would be needed in the neighborhood, rather than something like a Lake Terrace, where you're trying to get the, the bigger functions that create more of the, the traffic from. Uh, the second one is the lot area variance, which the board granted previously, it's an, an existing, uh, lot at two-point-seven three-eight, because it's in the OSP zone, they have a very large requirement, uh, we're, we're not changing anything that was there. The maximum building coverage, we went from fourteen-point-six-seven to fifteen-point-one-five, but we're at a two-story building, uh, rather than a three-story building, uh, and the, the parking relief, as, as Terry indicates, we have a hundred forty-nine, and, and there's a reason we have a hundred forty-nine. If we did a hundred fifty, we need to go to Capra, and you just flushed the whole project we thought that Capra was going to be operating. Uh, the, we, we feel that the hundred eighty, uh, that's indicated is for if both uses were being, were going on at the same time, which, which clearly it would not be, it's clearly overlapped, and, and it's my testimony that that overlap, overlap is more than, uh, adequate for the, the uses. The, uh, uh, buffer relief, uh, on the east and west side, and, and as indicated, we met with the, the neighbor on the, uh, east side, and we're proposing four-foot fence, which they're okay with, on the west side, we're to the park, uh, so I, I think that's buffer already. Uh, if the board wants something additional, the applicant is certainly willing to comply with whatever the board feels is appropriate. Uh, design waivers for curving sidewalk along Ocean Avenue frontage, uh, it's, it's, it's in an area where it doesn't have it. If the board wants, uh, curving sidewalk, the applicant will do curving. Uh, the application that's presented felt that the, the parking across the street doesn't have it, it's consistent with the area, but that's, uh, that's up to the board, and the board, uh, indicates on that we can go on with. Uh, and, and we're asking for similar ones, that I've asked the planning board to make a recommendation to change, that we're providing a driveway width of thirty-eight feet, and where the ordinance says it should be a maximum of thirty feet wide. The thirty feet makes sense for a small facility, thirty-eight is better. So we're asking for a waiver to do something better than, than what the ordinance limits us to.
Eric? Are you doing thirty-eight?
We're doing thirty-eight feet. The, it, that's, that's a provision that's, that's been in the ordinance since nineteen eighty-one, when we first started doing this. And, and if it was silly back then, I don't know when they put it in, but for a facility of this type, or any commercial-type facility, a little bit bigger is better.
There have been other applications in town that have exceeded that requirement. On this particular application, since it's on Route eighty-eight, DOT is, is going to have final link, what, as to the final configuration, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Uh, under the review comments, uh, we, we will provide the information, uh, that Terry is indicating. Uh, item two says provide testimony about the maximum number of employees, uh, which for a facility of this type would be roughly a hundred and twenty people, uh, we have a hundred forty-nine parking spaces. We feel that there will be, not everybody's going to drive, so it's going to be something less than a hundred and twenty parking spaces, which will leave us, uh, in excess of thirty parking spaces. The, uh, I don't think so, there's anything else that, that'd be a testimony. With respect to the reason for the variances, uh, the master plan of two thousand and seventeen, uh, on page seven, under division statement, encourage growth in development in appropriate locations. under division statement, encourage grossing development in appropriate location consistent with established land uses. Facility of this site on, on Route 88, next to the park and next to the church, in my opinion, that is appropriate. Uh, the municipal land use law, NJSA 40, column 55 DQ, under the purpose of the act is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. This will provide a, a nice rateable, it'll provide the simco halls for the use of the local residents. Uh, under G, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses, and this provides the office use as well as the, the simco halls. Uh, we're asking for a D variance. Uh, the site is particularly well-suited for this. Uh, the, the board previously granted the, the D variance for the use with the conditions that were slightly exceeding for the reasons I've indicated. Um, so it's, it's my testimony that, uh, the negative criteria is virtually nonexistent, and the positive criteria is provided already.
And Brian, what is the, what did we approve so far?
You, you approved a use variance to allow, uh, the, the office use and a simco hall in the basement, and you've put a condition that the simco hall should not be more than 6,000 square feet.
At that time, the building was a three-story office.
Okay, but did we actually approve then a?
Not a site plan, it was a bifurcated application.
Actually, we approved, but we approved a building, didn't approve a simco hall?
No, you approved a building with a simco hall in the basement, and the, the approval had a condition that the simco hall should not be more than 6,000.
But we, did we approve the size of the building?
Uh, no, I think, no.
Well, the applicant, I'm looking at the resolution, it was calling for a two-story office building of approximately 36,000, 36,000 square feet.
Chair, from here, that's 16, I think the resolution you're looking at.
That's right.
The resolution you're looking at was from 16, you're having 17 as well.
All right. Three floors, 45 feet high.
Three floor.
Um, the building footprint is 17, around 17,500.
That was the, I remember this in the application, we denied something, and then they told we approved something. Does that make sense?
Oh, I think we approved, and then, and then when we came, I didn't remember if it actually got denied, I know it was, oh.
I think what I'm struggling with, the, the, what's the front of the building? On Route 8 or on Water Drive?
On Route 88.
Route 88?
Yes.
Is traffic gonna come down Water Drive?
No, no.
Okay, so, so the amount of square footage you have in the basement for the simco hall could hold how many people legally?
Legally or, or?
Legally.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm not sure, the architect didn't put it on. Simco halls at 7,000 square feet, you'd probably have about 140 feet.
140 feet, which could mean, I never go with my wife together to the, the same thing, because we leave at probably different times.
I never go with my wife.
So, that's 280 guys. We leave the house at different times, we leave the hall at different times.
Like 140.
I don't get it. 140 people?
How close?
140 people.
140 people.
140 guys coming down Route 8?
Well, it's, uh, I, if I go to it, I either go with my wife, or if I go by myself, I leave before she gets there, so we only need one parking space. Uh, my, my experience with, the limited experiences, which is, was, uh, the chairman of the planning board invited me to his, uh, to, to, to a few weddings, uh, and, and I see two, two people show up in a car, so even if everybody came in their own car, that's 140 spaces. If, uh, you know, half the people don't come in their own car, then your 40, 30, 40 space is less than that.
How, how many spaces you said that Lake Terrace has?
Lake, Lake Terrace has, uh, and it was, uh, one of the board members counted it, it was, I, I think he said 380, but it, it was like 300.
And they have 18,000?
18,000.
It's 7,000, and it's split into two small halls, which means two small halls could be that sometimes only one is being used in a building.
Correct, correct, correct.
Question, yeah, but I'm not telling you, that also means that we're gonna do bristen, and even if they're performing to night traffic, when everybody's sleeping, a bristen is gonna go past the morning people coming into the, and, and, you know.
They'll just have to cut it short, you know?
I mean, but, not on weekends.
It's more, it's more, I, it, it, we seem to take place at the Cinox, I don't think we really go to a hall that much. It's more for a barbeque, for a board, for something that is a small events.
I agree with you.
Just the also comparisons about catering, uh, gourmet, a lot of lot gourmet, and maybe 50 parking spots and a much bigger spot.
And it's covered?
Yes. And he's a bigger, and he's a bigger space, about four, five thousand square feet, and he only has 50 spots. And ma, when they're a major event, they have to pull traffic, and say.
What's that, is that a question that's a way?
Right. Well, the next one over, by Lisa Chaco, that's about 35,000, about 3,500 square feet. Uh, how many spots that plus?
Thirty.
All right.
Right. Yeah, yeah, and would limit the use of the simco halls on weekdays to just evening?
You think?
Yeah.
The off, the office building's gonna be 53,000, 862 square feet, right?
That, that, that includes the, uh, basement. The, uh, the office building, the gross area for the office buildings is 35,862. It's 17,931 per floor.
So, it's 35, and the question is, 180 parking spaces is adequate for an office building 35,000 square?
Based upon the applicant's testimony, Brian, does the parking need the office use requirements?
The office use requirement for the two floors at 17,931 would be 119 spaces.
So, it needs the office?
Yes, we have 149.
The question is whether it needs all the uses included?
That's correct.
How many were shorted?
Off your face, as more people than, I've been to a lot of offices, and I'm gonna tell you right now, this could be more than that in 35,000 square.
Yeah, what would it have on the, 149? The raise is supposed to 119. It requires 119.
The code requires 119 is the testimony for what is proposed for the office use exclusively.
Yes.
So, it exceeds the UDO requirement for office?
By, yes.
The question is?
By 30 spaces, a whole.
The question is, is the proposed parking adequate as well as the office, as well as the basement, as well as civic activities, as well as anything else that's part of the?
All right, and just to make it a little bit easier, we're restricted use of the hall during the week only, so that you're actually trying to get, most people will be down by five o'clock. Uh, our authority is the hall only used in the evenings, so we're not gonna overlap on that during the week.
I would have to take that, I don't know if the board was saying to us to try to mediate the board on this.
So, people is just gonna, you know, back. There's no, there's no?
38.
We're gonna, 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 we're gonna.
No, we're still gonna bring all these employees into this area, which are, are, are not there now.
Fun.
Would you prefer townhouses?
Are you gonna pull it?
Right, I'm just saying, like, ratables, townhouses, ratables, townhouses.
I know, I know.
What, what is the, do you know what the occupancy of the, of the 37 or 38 hundred square foot hall is? How many people are allowed in this hall? It's on?
130.
Per, per month?
The, the two combined, when I looked at other applications we've done, and, and the number of, uh, occupants that it, that would hold the capacity of the hall, the two combined, uh, was 140.
Is that, is that what put a caterer later out or actually the buyer?
I, 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 the architect normally does that and puts the number of the plan, uh?
And that's the number you put on?
When I, no, there wasn't a number on the plan, so when I looked at it, uh, I pulled out some of the old applications we had done, uh, to compare, and, and mostly it's for schools, where they had the, uh, catering hall.
So, what's the actual footprint of the basement, that 18,000?
Same as the building.
17, 17, 18.
So, what are you doing with the rest of the basement?
So, there's, there's kitchen, there's, uh?
Co-broom.
Co-broom, yeah.
What's in the front of here, I assume the cell system is in that area? All my thoughts. That area there. That's what they gave me, so.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see the kitchen.
Kitchen over here, basically like a bathroom, it looks like. So, so what's that? Is it just not finished at this point? We know?
It's looking like it doesn't even have access.
I'm sure there's access. At the end of the day, um, the, the actual size of the hall that you're planning now, including the kitchen, how big is that?
That other area that's not labeled, should be labeled for storage.
Chairs, uh, tables.
What's, what's the actual area that you, see, I'm not.
The actual usage area of, of the hall?
Including the kitchen?
Without the, the hall?
Co-broom, the hall, the whole today. Uh, what I'm, what I'm struggling with is that, I'm trying, Terry, maybe you can help me with this. Did I understand that, that it was approved conditional that the hall shouldn't be greater than 6,000 square feet, that way?
And that was the condition?
So, you know, conditional means that it shouldn't be greater than 6,000.
Which, which why do you have to add another use?
Excuse me, Chairman. Per our interpretation of the resolution, uh, there's a condition that we're proposing here, the hall will be no larger than 6,000 square feet, including the kitchen, is that correct?
Yes.
So, including the kitchen? A use variance for, in order to make it larger?
Yes.
So, what's the total gross area of what we're proposing now for the, for the kitchen and the simco hall?
The kitchen's another 2,000, uh, 209 square feet, so, so it would be 9,67.
So, you went from 6,000 to 9,000?
I, I prefer to say from 6,000 to 9,400.
And I, I agree with that, so.
But there, there's a reason for it, because, so it came in originally, we were saying we weren't providing parking for the simco hall.
And I, I, I'm, I, I think it's to the use for this, for this thing. I, I do have a concern, you're having, and the kitchen's large, the original was 6,000, with a small kitchen, that's some of the concerns that we had. And the original meaning was not just the volume of people and how it's gonna overlap with the offices, et cetera, and the traffic and all that other stuff. But once we got past that, and we said it's okay to have a hall in the basement, one of the other things they talked about is that there was a concern that you have, you don't want to have a catering kitchen, you want to produce food, a manufacturing kitchen, a commercial to sell outside. And I see such a big kitchen that it's concerning that maybe there is an opportunity here, that somebody's in common, take the hall and use it for the simco, they're only gonna use it for small cities. Bristen will be, as I said before, the, the, have a shorter version, and then the kitchen, I'm just concerned if it's gonna be used, not, do it as a small kitchen. How big is the kitchen? 2,000? I see 20 by, I see 20 wide at the widest point. Okay? Okay? Um, I'm sorry to say that, uh, not that big.
It doesn't, it doesn't look laid out pretty well. How big is the lawn at the year here?
Uh, store, my, 1,500 square feet.
Okay, well, that kind of volume.
So, my certification hood is about 10, uh, 12 feet. It's a 2,000 square feet kitchen. 20 feet or not is 2,000 square. I've, I've, I'm considering my new store, I might be thinking that. You know, I haven't raised so long a line.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the applicant has no objection, I guess, policing issue, we have no problem with it putting it in the resolution, and it's for onsite, only, for onsite use, we're not, this is not supposed to be a, a commercial mission for, you know, for catering, yeah. Again, we have no problem with it, because that's not our intent, not used as that. It is a policing issue, I mean, Jerry, you know, we're probably agreeing, but I mean, we have no problem with that in the resolution, it's not our intent in any way, sure.
Adam, I'm gonna tell you what I have, okay? When we get, we, we had an issue with this application that came in originally, okay? We said we're willing to do, according to the resolution, 6,000 square feet, okay? I understand you guys, you knocked down one level, which, we had a problem with the building in general, with the size of the building, you guys know. I would be very happy, just give you 6,000 square feet in the, in the kitchen, leave the rest alone, you knocked down one building, you had no parking space, and call it a day. Because that's the reason what we, what you guys asked, that's the reason why we gave you on the resolution. Okay, so to come back here now and redo it, because you knocked down the building and added more parking space, it's great to try to add more parking space, okay? But I've also been to, to fiesta, as we say in Spanish, okay? And the parking's horrendous, okay? No matter how big or small the, the event is, okay? I've been throughout the whole, throughout the area in Lincoln. So, I would be happy if just the whole thing downstairs would be 6,000 square feet, which we agreed to before, make it usable at that point, and that gives me more facility to understand that now we have something that's really going to fit the contour of the parking and gonna take care of whatever traffic issues we might have on the size of the building that you guys are building. And use the other space, believe me, you'll need it for storage, I guarantee you that. That's just mine.
Can I just ask, if you're taking into consideration also, that original resolution, I think it's 6,000 square feet, including the kitchen? If the board could just take a look back, again, we've taken off a floor, we've provided parking, and again, I remember at the hearing, it was two and a half years ago, uh, I said before, and, and we came up with an offer, 6,000, including the kitchen. That was going to last minute, I remember, uh, if you, if the board could just, again?
Only because we had a problem with the size.
I, I, at this, at this point, you know, we could change the application a little bit. If you were just, uh, okay, think about that for a moment, there's, in the kitchen, 2,000 square feet, I'm leaving with a 4,000 square, so, um, the board could just have, have some discussion on that.
Chairman, I think, I think that, uh, you know, I have to agree, one of the, I'm looking at this a lot differently than I looked at it a couple of years ago, three years ago. Um, then it was just a monstrosity, it was an absolute monstrosity. I do agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that, um, you know, if you start off with 6,000 square feet, you know, today, and we approved it, subject to that, I, I, I asked that question earlier, because I was concerned about that too. But when you look at it, and you see two walls, and, and there's a, there's an explanation for the use, and not using it at, you know, during the days or the end, I, I don't see if they feel, if, if I, in my work, I'm just concerned about the, the commercial kitchen. If it could be in a resolution that they're not gonna have a commercial kitchen, and the use is gonna be minimized just for catering, also, if they have a party, I don't care. They need it for the neighborhood, that's my deal. What do you mean by commercial kitchens? Well, commercial, I'm sorry, commercial kitchen, obviously, they need commercial style kitchen for this. But, but I'm talking about, man, I, I meant to say, I, yeah, they, they.
You don't wanna be manufactured for offsite.
Exactly. I don't want it to be something off.
I don't want a third-party caterer manufacturing there for offsite parking.
Exactly. You know about deliveries coming in and out of people, that's, that's, that would take away from the thing, they chop it down the floor, it's not such a monstrosity, it's a big building, but.
You can't rent out a party or, you can't rent out a kitchen to a third-party, not a lot of restaurants.
Well, is there, I'm, we didn't talk about that, is there gonna be, is there gonna be some, one caterer, I mean, how's that gonna be? One caterer?
I don't think it changed, I don't think it changed anything. If it doesn't change anything, we have so many restrictions, I mean, the chair, if you don't mind, the?
I don't think there's restriction.
No, the manufacturing restriction, I understand, but what I see right now is, we, you originally approved the 6,000, the way you split right now is really fulfilling a need that the community has. It happens to be that if we have two simco halls, and the size, the smaller ones, it is, it is a problem right now. Anybody who's making a simco at night, there is, there's no place to go. This way, there's two, it's 16, it used to be 6,000, things have changed the last two and a half years. I don't see a problem the way it is right now. I think they're putting enough restrictions upon themselves to only do it at night, you know, the non-manufacturing, I think that's enough restrictions, we can't really choke them so much, if they're doing something good, really, I don't even know how much money they're gonna be making in the, in the bottom. Now, the upstairs, I understand the upstairs, they made a less, a less, a rest plan, making two, making two, two floors, and, and I really, I appreciate that, it's, I mean, nobody wants to live on Good Day 8, so.
With all due respect, they didn't really, they're not giving us much, because they're not really giving us anything less than the original approval. The original approval was how many square feet? Forget about three floors, the, the three floors, I think we came back in second.
Sure.
Well, the, the original approval, though, we were using all 149 spaces.
How many square feet was it?
How many square feet, now, it's an approval.
Sir, you have, oh, no, I have.
Now, the original resolution? I'll have a second. We're not really. It was, the, the, now, and don't forget, it was only a use approval.
Right.
The original one called for approximately 36,000 square feet of all.
Two, two.
And this is now presumably asking for 35,000? And this is now presumably asking for, oh, 30, 36,000?
35,000.
So we're not, not really, they, you know, they're, not their floor, they're, this is what we originally said.
Well, I, I guess the applicant would say yes.
That's right, that's what I'm...
Well, they came after they got the original...
They only came after, with a lot more aggressive.
Well, forget that, we said no.
Forget it. So here tonight, taking site plan approval, for square footage, which is, they told you about originally when you gave the use variance, and the original use variance included, uh, a basement, catering hall with the kitchen, so 6,000 feet. Now, and really, when you think about it, the only difference is, they've asked for 7200 square feet.
I agree with you.
Not, what, now, yeah, it's 9,000, but, but I mean, the first and second floor, still the same as it was when you planned...
First and second floor is, is the same, which is what?
36,000. 36,000, 35,000.
80,000 square foot of floor.
17, just wasn't 80,000.
And the basement is going to be a 36,000, like 6,000.
Well, basement is, it'll be that size, I guess, but they're wanting to use 6,000, I mean...
What's going to be the rest of the basement?
Sorry?
Storage, storage, the rest of the basement, storage.
Oh, okay. Go to the area that... I think the footprint of the basement will still be the same.
Well, to the chair, what I'd like to do real quick, before we go through, uh, continue asking questions, I'd like to just, uh, take a break here, open up to the public. Anybody from the public want to be heard on 3971B? Please come forward.
Uh, in the audience, there's, there's an attorney from the church, and we've already discussed the, the fence, so he's fine.
Hearing none, I close it to the public.
Uh, Chair, if I can, and, you know...
Please.
They asked for a sidewalk over there, I think it's, there's definitely got to be an over of a sidewalk, first, it's opening, it's not during massive construction, but if, 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 what, now, what I'm saying is that it's going to be a benefit for the neighbors, even on Saturday, with people who rent the hall, and they're all going to be walking up and down.
Sure, sure.
Everyone wears a helmet. If you think we should...
Her, her sidewalk.
Yeah, and one other question, in the construction halls, are, are they actually going to build a separate hall, or are you going to have a removable wall? Is it going to be solid walls, they're separating two walls, and, you know, what guarantee we have that the storage area in the front is going to be just that storage, as opposed to, uh, one day, all of a sudden, you know, there's a little extra space for a home?
Well, that's the second question first, we, we have no intention of converting space as a storage, we have no place to put chairs, the neighbors will need, uh, we need for storage. As far as, I think, I, I think now we would like to need plus ability, that again, someone who wants to come, same park, same, same space, not having square footage, to have the right to provide the removable wall.
I think it doesn't like that, the other...
Yeah.
You gotta pick out a co-op room, or...
A hallway in between.
Yeah, it's not, it's not... Looks like it's... Try and number submit that, so we can put that in.
The way the plans are built, it's impossible, it would be...
We should...
Yeah, studies of the architectural, uh...
I'm saying, I would have been bad for it, you would have done that up, it would more...
Again, the intent is to have it too small, that, that was, the, too smaller, yeah.
And any other question from board members? Hearing none, can I get a vote please on appeal number 3971B?
Let me just tell you what I, I have, which, for you, uh, before you was, uh, two stories, totally 35,800 and change, so with 17, whatever the bid math is, I'm not quite 18,000 square feet, but, um, the footprint of the basement would be the same, the prior approval was 6,000 square feet in the basement, including the kitchen, for, uh, recreational purposes, religious purposes, now they want to add 7, total of 9, 9,000 square feet. They will install curb sidewalks along, not only the four-foot vinyl fence along the...
188.
Uh, sorry, thank you. Uh, the four-foot buffer fence, four-foot vinyl fence along the church common boundary line, they've asked for an approval, or waiver from requiring any buffer requirements on the park side, which I think is understandable. Uh, they want the driveway width to be wider than 30 feet allowed, they want it to be 38 feet. Um, they've agreed that if you grant, the request for the service for effectively 9200 square foot kitchen and catering hall, it would only be used in the, in the evenings, um, and it was only to use onsite, the kitchen would only be for onsite purposes, no...
During the week. No, no, I, I believe I said...
The restriction for the, for the non-use of the facility is Monday to Friday in the morning. If you use it in the morning, Friday.
On weekends, Sunday, no more. Uh, only going to, okay, Monday, Friday.
It's not one.
Okay.
I think Judah said the kitchen shouldn't be used, uh, off-site.
Commercial, right? I had that, nothing off-site, I had that. So that's what's before you...
Sidewalk, uh...
Yeah, sidewalk.
Sidewalk, hurdle, lawn, or... How like it, did we discuss any like it?
We, the, the, exactly. Yeah, we agree with the captain's letter, both of them.
The lighting would be on the building, is that what it's going to be?
I, I would imagine there's going to be security lighting on the building, I believe you have a parking lot, a parking lot, is that correct?
And signage would be on the building.
Yeah.
And signage supplies.
For a sign.
Question, Chairman? Yeah, the signage, to the best of your knowledge, is complying with code.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was just going to be, with the paperwork...
As picked nine of terms of the report, it starts with the lighting, and indicates what the lighting is, and it's all to be in compliance with the UUO, is that correct?
And they're paying taxes, right? This is a ratable, not a non-profit organization. Including the simco hall is a ratable, right?
It's not going to be condos, it's spoken, right?
Okay, uh, can I get a vote on this, please?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. Motion to approve with a condition the chairman just mentioned.
All right.
I have a motion to approve.
Does the condition, what's the size of the basement, is that going to be a 70, 70?
As, as you, as you, as you...
Way presented, the way presented, God.
Okay, approve for, everyone has thought, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Judith Revere, can I have a, a, a vote?
Mr. Yellen?
Hello?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Vivia?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And we didn't miss a thing tonight. Tell the chairman, the meeting has recently been back.
Before this, we were not looking at the minutes that you have in your resolutions. That's a focus. A resolution? Motion to approve resolution?
Wait, wait. We have... We have...
Our resolution, wait a minute, Chairman.
We have, we have four resolutions.
Okay.
The two we showed, the Montessori division for the rabbi, and the division of...
Okay, so, yes, 4090, which is on the agenda, which is 570 Ocean, 4099 Hill Techman, and we have 4010, which is Natali, and 418, which is...
Congregate and Baptist.
Okay, gentlemen, can you hear what resolutions we have?
Yes.
Okay, can we vote on resolutions, please?
Yes.
All say aye.
Do we have, do all agree on resolutions?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Pass?
Aye, aye.